Hello, welcome to this meeting of the Kingman Common Council.
Welcome to this work session of the Kingman Common Council. Could we have roll call please, Ms. Mouser?
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lingenfelter?
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on the agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. And the first topic on our agenda tonight is utility billing and licensing department report. We have Ms. Tina Moline, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. So tonight I wanted to provide you with a utility billing and licensing department report. And really originally it was going to be just to give an update on how the new system has affected our customers and how it's affected us. But then I also thought, you know what? I'm going to also provide you with talking about our service, our customers, and a little bit of our workload as well. So our mission statement is to provide our customers with prompt and courteous customer service while also maintaining an accurate and efficient utilities billing and collection and licensing system. So in talking about our customers, who are they? Well, we have 20,372 water customers. Of those water customers, we also have 10,859 sewer and 12,264 sanitation customers. And in November, we took over the licensing, the business licensing processing and administration. And so now we also have 1,864 active business licenses and 2,463 animal licenses. What are the services that we provide to our customers? Well, first and foremost, always providing professional prompt and courteous service with a smile. That's the most important thing that we do for our customers. In addition to processing their payments and creating and completing their service orders, assisting customers with any of their inquiries on their accounts, of course managing the billing and the collection processes, administering business and animal licensing, and answering the city's switchboard. Who is our team? Well, we have six and a half people on our team. We have a utility billing manager. We have four customer service representatives and a utility billing specialist who focuses solely on utility billing, on the billing portion. And we also have a part-time person who is sometimes a student intern when they are available. Otherwise, it's just filled with a non-student. So looking at some of our workload or just statistics in general, so, and historically, looking since fiscal year 13, how has our customer base increased? So in fiscal year 13, you'll see that we had 18,628 customers and we've increased that customer base by 9%. We're currently serving the 20,372. We are also serving 18% more sewer customers and 11% more sanitation customers than in And then looking at our service requests, because that's what we do at the utility billing department, is process and complete those service requests or the service order requests. So what are our average service orders processed per month? And you'll see how those have also increased since 2013. You will see that in fiscal year 19, there is a decline. And that's really because, primarily because with the transition to the new system, we have not processed non-pay disconnect orders, which typically average about 445 service orders a month. And so that would push that over to pass the 1,911 figure. So number and type of payments processed. Well, back in 2013, we really only had four different options for our customers. They could come to the counter. They could drop off a check through the mail or through our drop boxes, through bank draft and online bill pay. And in 2019, we offer now six different, we've added IVR, that was added in fiscal year 14, which has taken on 26% of our total payments. And we also have the web now as well. And although it shows an average of 444 since fiscal year 19, we really only launched that in November. And in February, we actually had close to 1,200 web payments that are currently being processed. So that system is already working, only three months in or four months in. So I did want to share our average calls and our calls handled and then go a little bit into the times that it takes to process calls as well. Back in 2013, and this was before we launched that IVR system, we were handling 6,270, or let me rephrase that, we did not handle those. We received 6,273 calls and we handled 4,934 of them. And then you'll notice that there was a significant drop-off from fiscal year 14 until really fiscal year 19 as well. And that is primarily because of the IVR system. That has taken a huge workload off of the ladies at the counter. They're no longer having to take those payments over the telephone. You will see in fiscal year 19 that our average calls per month are 5,040 and that our average calls handled have gone down to about 2,091. And I will show the months in fiscal year 19 to give you an idea of why it looks the way that it looks. So also, again, phone calls, average talk, our average talk time, our wait time and our longest wait time since fiscal year 13. So back in 13, our average talk time was about two minutes and 12 seconds. Our average wait time, three minutes and 26 seconds. And our average longest wait time was just over 17 minutes. And you'll see that from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year 18, the average wait times were in the 20-minute ranges. But in fiscal year 19, that has increased to 47 minutes. And again, we'll see that when we get to the months in fiscal year 19 on why that has Looking at our phone call service statistics by month from July through February of this fiscal year. So July, August, September, October, and even November was okay. But you'll notice that in December and January, it was really unacceptable. And that is primarily because of the launch of the new system. So not only did we have a new system for our customer service reps to learn, but also for our customer base to learn. You are aware that we were not able to send out bills during most of the month of November. Well, by the time late November, early December comes around and customers aren't receiving bills, the phone calls just skyrocketed. And on top of that, we were able to start to get delinquent notices out. And so then customers weren't getting bills and now getting delinquent notices. And there was just a lot of confusion. We had new bills also. We redesigned them. And so there were a lot of questions from the customers. And because we're also getting the phone calls, we also had had heavy traffic in the lobby as well. And so the ladies weren't able to answer the phone calls. So that explains December and January. And as you see, February, we still have a pretty good variance there. However, it is coming down and I would definitely expect it. February was a great month. We were able to finally get bills out on time. And I expect over the next few months, as customers start to, okay, bills are coming on time, okay, we're going through that normal process again, I'm understanding my bill, I'm able to pay online, that it will come back down to normal and we'll get back to those regular averages. So what were the improvements that we made for customers and for our system in November? Well, first of all, progress is never possible without change. And that was very difficult for all of us, including employees and our customers. However, we were able to provide our customers with great improvements. And one of those was web-based payments. They are now able to make their payments online. And additionally, they can view their bills online. They can also opt-in to receiving their bills via email delivery. And that's close to 300 now. We want to get much higher than that, but at least people are opting in. We've put an application online for service instead of requiring customers to call in or come in to the counter. They can do so over our website and submit that through an email. And we take care of that on that end so we don't have to worry, they don't have to worry about contacting us directly. And we gave them a better bill. So the bill redesign provided more transparency. So it breaks out the charges and it shares exactly what they're getting billed for. When we reached out to the customer service representatives when we talked about the bills, one of the suggestions was, can we show more information on the charges? Because we get a lot of questions on, well, what am I being charged for? How many cans am I being charged for? What is that water fee? So we thought, let's just share everything. And then if customers have questions or if we've made an error, they're going to notice it on their bill right away and they can contact us and we can make those adjustments. So for the customers, those were the improvements. And then for the system in general, there's increased functionality and better reporting and data collection. So anytime that you can export reports directly to Excel and be able to maneuver and manipulate everything without having to, without struggling to do so, or it being somewhat of a challenge, it makes life so much easier on our end. And so it provided that for us. It also provided us a way to keep all of our customer records electronically and tied to their customer accounts in the system instead of having to go to a file and try to pull those out. We launched a customer service satisfaction survey. And we did this because one of our performance measurements is to attain an 80% satisfaction in the utility billing department this year. Well, the only way we can do that is offering some way for the customers to provide us that feedback. And so we thought we'd start with this. And it's a card that is in front of all of the ladies' counters. And customers can fill those out and drop them in a drop box. And we launched this in February. And so at the end of February, we pulled the box. And there were 53 cards. And I was actually very surprised that we had so many people that were willing to participate. But a little bit nervous too, as far as what those comments were going to say. And so, but, I was very, very pleasantly surprised and so excited that we were able to share with the customer service reps how satisfied our customers were with their service. And we actually asked, were you only asking customers who got, you felt good service? And they said, no, we never pushed, almost never pushed at all. It was mostly just the customers volunteering to fill one of those out. So you'll see, all of the ratings were positive. There were two that were left blank, they were not negative. And we also received 35 comments, just people willing to share their great experience with us. So I wanted to be sure to share that with you as well. So I guess the moral of the story is that right now, we're not able to provide that prompt service. But when they do reach our customer service reps, they're really getting served fantastic. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have on the report this evening.
Do you want to have a question? Okay, Councilwoman Nelson?
They are fantastic. Those ladies do a great deal of work. They, I've been in there when there've been people yelling and I've been in there when people were happy. Your ladies handle it really, really well. And they need to know that.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, questions?
Mayor, if I may, just tag on to Tina's report. We have just seen a huge improvement in people using online. But the fact of the matter is that we still have huge numbers of people that were helping at the counters. And Tina's people have been absolutely fantastic to deal with folks that have been waiting in line, that people are willing to come and wait in line for 15, 20 minutes to be served at the counter. And I know, as Counselor Nelson had pointed out, there's sometimes very irate person that's been on hold. I know that we've had a few phone system issues recently where the queuing has been not working properly. And every time that the customer service was in question, they always rose to the top and delivered the best. So my hat is off to Tina and her team for their efforts because, and I know that they're doing a great job, because my phone isn't ringing. And when it does, that very rare time or two, her team immediately gets on it and takes care of the person's problems. So Ms. Tina, congratulations on having just an absolutely great team.
Yeah, I'm really, really fortunate. Thank you very much.
I'll add my kudos to you and your team. I was really surprised to see those long, long lines earlier this year. I mean, they were, people were so, as a rule, very patient every time I went in. Part of the reason, I think, is because the frontline team is so good at their customer service and their smiles. They would always look up and hello, you know. It really is well done. And I know the city has done a lot of customer service training and that is probably permeating throughout the whole organization. But it certainly shows up on that frontline. And so kudos to you, kudos to that team. We do have the very best right there at the front. And that was a trial by fire to go through that. And I'm hoping that those lines will get shorter and people will learn how to use the online and the web-based services. But we've got a great team there, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you.
Anything else? Then I think that's...
I think I might be the next one.
Oh, you have the next one too?
I think so.
Okay. Of course you do. Okay. The next topic for tonight is the pension or PS/PRS policy. Ms. Moline?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, so tonight we're here to talk about our pension funding policy and really as it relates to PS/PRS. And so what is PS/PRS? Well, we know that it's the retirement system program for our public safety personnel. It's a defined benefit plan, meaning that there is some predetermined benefit at the end of, at the end of all of the contributions that a retiree is going to receive. And so that determines how much we contribute on a monthly basis. The assets that all of the agencies in Arizona have for their public safety personnel are pulled at PS/PRS. However, although they're all pulled for investment purposes, each of us are tracked separately, meaning that our contribution rates are different and our unfunded liabilities are different. So, and so we each manage our own costs and we also assume the risks or bear the risks associated with that. And so we have talked about unfunded liability over the last few years. And I know Mr. Bacon gave a pretty comprehensive presentation last year as well. And so that is the purpose of putting together a pension policy. Not only is it sound fiscal practice, but it is also a statutory requirement by July 1st of 2019. And so the policy requires us to address how to maintain the stability of funding. It also requires us to address how and when those funding requirements are going to be met. And they do not have to be specific. We just need to be able to address it and recognize that we are going to address it. And we need to define the city's funded ratio target and the timeline that we need to reach that target by. We also have to evaluate it every year and then of course make it public for, on our website for the public to see. So when we talk about our unfunded liability, again, that's the piece, it's debt. And that's what we're required to pay on the PS/PRS. And so we look at our police and our fire tiers one and two. And this is as of our June 30th, 2018 actuarial report. And you'll see in that last little balloon that our unfunded liability combined is just over $30 million. That's about 52% funded and meaning just under 50% unfunded. So a pretty heavy number. And so how did we get here and what are some of the factors that contribute to that unfunded status? Well, the biggest are any sort of benefit changes through any sort of legal rulings. We had a big benefit change legal ruling back in 2014. It was SB 1609. And that is when you'll notice our PS/PR rates began to really increase dramatically from what they were before. Also on top of that is our investment earning assumptions. So there are certain assumptions in those actuarial reports in order to get to that defined benefit. And so those assumptions also play a role on our unfunded liability. Life expectancy assumptions, people are living longer as well. Investment strategies. So PS/PRS invests the monies that they receive. And as you recall, the Great Recession was not a great time for investment and we are still recognizing losses from that period of time. And so that also is a drain or increases our unfunded liability. And then of course, our local contributions on top of that. If we're only making our annual required and we're only paying that on actual, we're not really doing anything to help ourselves on that unfunded liability. So let's look at how it affects us, how that unfunded liability affects us. So we'll look at the rate and then we'll look at the dollars. So we have, there's a normal rate that we're required to pay. So assuming we did not have an unfunded liability, we have that normal rate. And you see what that would be for police and fire. And this is based on our fiscal year 20 estimates. So 12.53% for police and 14.48% for fire. But then you're going to notice that legacy rate or that unfunded rate, how much more on top of that normal rate we're required to pay, pushing us to close to 50% for police and over 50% for fire. Now what does that cost us dollar-wise? You'll see in the next table what that looks like. If we did not have the unfunded liability, we would pay about $1 million in fiscal year 20 for PS/PRS. Very, very reasonable. But because of that unfunded liability, we're going to pay close to $3.7 million. That's a huge number. And that's a huge difference between, it's a huge, it eats up a huge portion of our general fund revenues, $2.7 million additional because of the unfunded liability. So historically, let's look at how this has increased over the years. So in fiscal year 09, our unfunded liability was about $8.9 million. Today, it's 30.2. And you'll see in fiscal year 14 is when it really started to bump up and it has just continued to increase since then. So then looking at our funded status, so not the unfunded piece, but our funded status. In fiscal year 09, if, looking at the police plan, we were 67.5% funded and 74% funded for fire. And you'll see where we are today, 51.7 and 52. So contribution rate by percent and then by dollar amount history, what does that look like? So in fiscal year 11, which is using those fiscal year 09 reports, which hit us in fiscal year 11, you'll see what our contribution rates were based on the police plan, the fire plan. And then you'll see where they are, of course, in 20, which is close to that 50 and over 50% for the fire. And then again, you'll see what those dollars are. Again, a huge difference just in those nine years. So PS/PRS as a whole is, this is a challenge for PS/PRS in general and for many of the organizations and agencies in the state of Arizona. And I selected a handful just to kind of show across the board what it, what it looks like. And you'll see, poor Bisbee, these are the funded rates. They only have 14.3% funded, a funded ratio on their police side and on the fireside, 8%. You'll see where we are. You'll see Havasu, I included Mojave County and NACFed, and then of course Prescott and Surprise. But we're all in the same boat. There are cities out there who are 100% funded, but most of us are feeling the pressure of it. And as a matter of fact, the city, the town of Prescott, in 2017, they were feeling it so, so heavy that their voters actually approved of a 3/4% sales tax increase to be dedicated solely to funding, to paying down the PS/PRS liability. So what are our funding objectives? So when we talk about our policy and we need to identify these, well, first of all, we want to become fully funded by June of 2036. And we want to maintain our annual required contribution. That's that normal cost with our legacy rate. And we want, and how are we going to pay for that? Well, we're going to do that from our operating revenues. We're going to identify that in our policy as well. What else do we want to do? Because it's not enough for what we're currently contributing. So what do we want, what else? How else do we want to address this? And here are a few ideas. So this, in fiscal year 19, as you recall, you approved us to go ahead and, first of all, prepay our entire fiscal year's budgeted PS/PRS costs. And so that's, it depends on the year, but that could be an additional $300,000 to $600,000 that we're actually paying into PS/PRS for fiscal year 19. So that's great that we're paying that above and beyond, but it's still not enough. And so what else can we do? So we can possibly, one of the alternatives is to prepay at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is what we also did. And that's so that we can receive all of the investment earnings for the entire year instead of waiting and making payments monthly. We get to invest that money right at the beginning of the year. We also can use fund balance reserves. And like Prescott did, we can also dedicate some sort of funding source. The table at the right talks, shows a little bit about how these additional hundreds of thousands of dollars impact our rates going forward as well as what it looks like for the general fund as far as what are we going to save in the general fund if we contribute an additional $100,000 or $200,000 or up to $1 million. And so when you look at this, and let's say that we went ahead and contributed an additional $100,000 for police and an additional $100,000 for fire, what is that going to do? Well, it will possibly decrease our rate by about 0.28% and save the general fund close to $20,000. So, but, and as we go down, as you see, in $1 million, we'll actually decrease our rate by about 2.75%. And that saves the general fund almost $200,000. Now, these numbers don't look very appetizing or appealing for sure. However, we need to remember that this is not debt that we are required to pay tomorrow or the next year. We just need to have it fully funded by 2036. And so these are some options that we will look at. And so then what are our next steps before we actually put this policy together? Well, one of the things is, of course, we're going to develop a policy that's going to achieve that 100% funding goal. And we are actually going to talk about some of the actions that we want to take at the March 26th meeting so that we can begin to develop that policy and bring it back to you for approval at a later date this fiscal year, hopefully sometime in April. But we'll have more data for you as far as projections, what will it look like if we use fund balance? What will it look like if we were to dedicate a funding source? What will it maybe look like if we continue to prepay and prepay our budgeted amount, not just our actual amount? So we'll have some of that for you at the meeting next Tuesday to help with this. And then again, we'll bring it to you sometime before the second meeting in June or by the second meeting in June for approval so that it can go into place before July 1st. And then of course, we'll revisit and reevaluate every single year. And so with that, I will take any questions on the policy. This is really just to give you an idea of what we're going to be bringing to you and let you know that we do need to develop a policy before July 1st.
All right. Questions?
I have one.
All right. Councilwoman Staley?
This is my least favorite presentation that you do. Every time, so depressing. Okay, so we, I just want to kind of clarify, this year, we're, this last year, we were going to pay around $3 million, you said?
For fiscal year 19?
Yeah.
We paid 3 point, I want to say 3.3, 3.4 million dollars in fiscal year 18, or 19.
And that payment isn't paying down the unfunded balance?
So a port, so it is. That's why they increased that unfunded liability rate. It does. But we certainly don't want to wait until 2036 to do so.
Right.
Because assumptions change and that rate could increase to where the general fund can no longer absorb those increases.
Right. Okay. Do you, at this time, do you have an idea of what annual payments are going to need to look like, best case scenario, to knock that out?
There are a lot of variables in that, Councilwoman Staley, because the budget plays a huge role in that. And so I don't know what that's going to look like. I know ultimately, I would love to take everything to prepay that and use everything to pay down debt, but that's not reasonable. And so I don't know what that will look like until I know better what the budget's going to look like. And then we'll be able to bring something to you as far as what our recommendation might be.
Okay. I understand. I was just, if you could wave a magic wand and make it go away, that'd be great. Thank you, Tina.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
But tagging on to that, if I look at this chart, are you projecting that in 2020, it would be about 3.8 or 3.8?
That's based on our current roster. So again, I don't know what that's going to look like.
So I remember when we took the sunset off of the half a percent. It was discussed at that time that it will take all of that just to keep up with these PSPRS payments. So 3.8. And all of this comes out of the general fund?
It does.
But that does address the unfunded, a portion of the unfunded?
Yes, that's what that increase is. Yeah, that's why it's such a high rate.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I would just add that, you know, just on the back of the napkin, you have 15 years to pay off $30 million, all things being equal. I don't, I know the finance director doesn't like to do this, but that's $2 million a year that you just pay. I look at, I think it's safe to say that we're looking at it as debt and, and we owe it and we legally owe it. And so, of course, we are going to be, we are absolutely going to be looking for every possible way in which to, to, to pay this and be in compliance with state law because we have to. I will say that in, in looking at this, and it's, it will help you to look at this and then look at our challenge as we look at compensation as well. Because with increases, we've got to absorb full cost. And so that, that has been what I think the city's been staring the city in the face for a long time and why there's been really no movement within the pay system because movement in the pay system compounds at almost 50% for retirement. So, I mean, it just, we've got, we've got this problem coming and going, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Staley, did you have another question?
Yeah, I just want to, on what you had said about the $2 million additional, that's additional, so that's $5 million a year is what you're talking about to pay this off, correct? Correct? And, and what percent do we increase sales tax to find that extra $2 million a year? What's the percent?
Well, a half percent's about 3.2 to 3.3, so yeah, more than a quarter percent.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have one question for Manager Foggan. It's a hypothetical. If the city of Kingman were to just, you know, maybe look at a fire district down the road, perhaps a consolidated fire district, would the annual contribution for that, the fire personnel for that consolidated district, that'd be their responsibility and then the city would be still left with the PD responsibility? Is that correct?
We would be responsible for the debt even if we didn't have the fire department?
So it wouldn't be up to the fire district?
It wouldn't transfer to them.
It wouldn't transfer to the fire district? Okay, I didn't know that. Thank you.
Would anybody else like a comment, question? Thank you, Tina Moline. Appreciate it. It's also my least favorite part of the budget discussion, but, well, it has been. I don't know what will be this year. Central procurement discussion, that may be you too.
Hey, it is!
All right. Please, please continue.
Oh, goodness.
It's your night.
All right. Okay. So centralized procurement. So this is something that Vice Mayor Lingenthaler had asked us to, to discuss. And I actually want to say thank you to Vice Mayor Lingenthaler for forwarding all sorts of information to us on centralized procurement, best practices and position papers and all sorts of things. So, so thank you. And so I thought I would just start quickly with what is centralized procurement. So it's really where a single division of procurement professionals control and manage the purchasing for an organization. That's just a short and sweet summary. We, as the city of Kingman, utilize a decentralized procurement process whereby we don't use that single division. Each division is responsible for their purchasing and, for their managing and purchasing. So the benefits and the drawbacks of centralized procurement, you'll see there, there are quite a few benefits of centralized procurement. It mitigates legal risk and achieves best value through maximizing competition. It promotes fair and open competition, so improving our processes and procedures. Of course, when you have one division doing everything, then, of course, it's going to improve the process. We don't have different divisions doing different processes. Developing business relationships, training opportunities for our customers and maximizing efficiency. And the drawbacks to that are potentially the cost versus the benefit of it. So there is a cost to have another division and other people that, on, on, on staff operating the department. And then, of course, finding the qualified people to operate that department. So there was a best practice that Vice Mayor Lingenthaler had forwarded, which is developed by the NIGP, and it's the place of procurement. And there are several elements that are identified in the place of procurement, and I highlighted a few. One of those says that the chief procurement officer should hold procurement authority. And in order for someone to, I guess, really be able to have or hold that procurement authority, they need to be an executive level type of position, so more like a director type of position. And that's highlighted, you see, in element three. And then it also states in element four, that the function and the agenda of procurement should be distinct from other departments. Again, it needs to be its own division or other, other departments are not handling this process. And so how is, what are procurement process workflows? And I really want to focus on the Kingman piece to share with you how we currently, how we currently manage procurement. And so as I said, it's the different departments. Every department is responsible for their own purchasing. However, every department also utilizes cooperative purchasing agreements, they utilize job order contracts, and we piggyback on whatever we can piggyback on, as well as state contracts and other counties and cities' contracts as well. And so, and so we always, we in finance, always provide a training once a year just to kind of go over procurement code, what our thresholds are so that departments are aware of that as they go, as they make those purchases. And, and what's required of them. If, you know, postings are required or cooperatives are available, council approval is required for certain types of purchases as well. And then, so once the department goes through those purchasing processes and determines the thresholds and what's required, you know, formal bidding, not formal bidding, can we utilize a cooperative? Do we need to go to council? Then they will reach out to finance, who then ensures that our procurement code is being followed. And we do that by requiring the divisions to provide us all of the supporting documentation. So if they are utilizing certain agreements or job order contracts, we require copies of those. We require, if it's a formal bid, we require the departments to provide us all of the postings and the requirements that our procurement code states must be met. And so once that is completed and once they have done that successfully, then we will approve that purchase and they can move forward with it. If they have not done that successfully, then we reach back out to them and we state, okay, we need this particular document or hey, you didn't get three quotes, you need to go get at least three quotes. But we make sure that that procurement code's being, you know, being followed. And so then, again, once it's approved, they can proceed with, with the purchase. And I know that centralized procurement is not that way. I, I have not operated in a centralized procurement organization, but based on the best practices and based on reaching out to other cities, what I found is everything flows through one division. The procurement division will primarily take care of all of those processes. And, and I guess it depends as well as, as far as what the types of purchases are that they are, that they, they handle. So, looking at other organizations throughout Arizona, I contacted a few of them, you'll see that some of them are decentralized. Some of them are centralized. However, some of them only, only use centralized procurement for those, for those purchases that are over that $50,000 threshold, in our instance, what it would be, that formal bidding. Or only are responsible for obtaining cooperatives and job order contracts. And then others are responsible for everything, from small purchases to large purchases. And so you'll see here just a list of cities who utilizes centralized procurement and who utilizes decentralized. So I just wanted to share with you as far as some of the, maybe the qualifying purchases that our procurement division within the city of Kingman might have handled. And this is assuming that it would not take into consideration those small purchases or, those small purchases, that it would take, that the procurement division may handle anything that requires bids. So looking at our number of purchases that could potentially be qualifying, we had 172 total qualifying purchases. Of those, 147 were between the 5,000 to 49,999 threshold. And you'll see the dollar amount of those purchases. And then you'll also see that we had 25 purchases that exceeded or were at least $50,000 or exceeded that, that level and what the dollar amount of those purchases were. And that's just really for information for you. So is decentralized procurement effective? So our departments, our departments utilize cooperative contracts, state contracts, job order contracts. And so by doing that, they are, they are not having to go out and obtain the bids themselves or review the bids themselves. They're relying on those agencies who have already gone through that process. They're relying on that information and those contracts. And so if we were going out and we were not pursuing those different purchasing options, then it may not be as effective as what it currently is for the city. And can the cost of centralized procurement be justified? Well, it's another department within the organization, so hiring additional people. And how many people, I don't know. It ranges from, through cities where there's one to more than seven or eight, and it just depends. And so I certainly wouldn't be comfortable trying to justify that, but just basing it saying, okay, going to handle our purchases of $5,000 or more, possibly two people, a director and a technician or a specialist, and then just other operating expenses, about $200,000 a year. Again, those are just, those are just personnel costs and operating costs. There's also the, where do we put them sort of costs as well. And as you know, we're, we are struggling with space in the city too. But those are some of the considerations. And so with that, I will try to answer any questions or Mr. Foggan tried to answer any questions or any other comments.
Are there any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Lingenthaler?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Tina. I appreciate it. The salary costs that you showed, they may be a little high. I think in this area, you may be able to get a director for maybe $80,000 and you maybe get a procurement person that works under them for maybe, you know, 47 to 50s, low 50s.
So that includes all of the benefit costs and the burden rate also in that.
Right.
So, and I did use a direct, our director level compensation.
So really, you know, I put this on because in a post 413 operating environment, we have to maximize or make sure maximizing the value from every single public dollar that we have. And I think that there's opportunity here. In one of the, the documents I forwarded, the summary was "Public Procurement or Centralized Public Procurement Maximizes the Effectiveness of Public Funds While Safeguarding the Public's Interest in an Open, Inclusive, and Transparent Environment, Thus, Thus Helping the Agency Attain the Overall Best Value for Their Dollars." I know that you don't have any experience in a centralized procurement agency, so joining us this evening, for this evening's work session, is Mojave County Procurement Director, who was on your list for centralized procurement, her, their procurement director, Rebecca, she may go by Becky O'Brien. She was invited this evening so that she can speak to the value of centralized public procurement and so that the city council may ask questions directly to her as a current professional public procurement practitioner. Mojave County Public Procurement is one of the best in the country, having received the National Procurement Institute's Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award for 13 consecutive years. In doing so, they're, they're one of only 48 counties in the United States and Canada that have received this award. So I thought that it'd be great to have her and to be able to hear her experience and what she believes the value is to an organization.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there anything else that you would like to ask Ms. Moline? I appreciate, I appreciate it very much.
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien, I would invite you to the podium to give a short presentation.
Thank you so much, Mayor Miles, Vice Mayor Lingenthaler, all commissioners, City Manager, Mr. Foggan. I'm very happy to be here. I don't have really a prepared presentation. I just kind of found out about it a little earlier today, but I'm certainly happy to share any information and can maybe provide some of my insights as to what I think a centralized procurement function can provide and benefit you. Ms. Moline, the benefits that she listed in her presentation, I had just jotted some notes, all those items were on my notes, so she had a pretty good list for you there. One of the things, she talked about cooperative purchasing. And the cooperative purchasing opportunities are continuing to grow for us. So you may have multiple cooperative opportunities for the same product or service. So one of the questions you have to ask are, you're reviewing all of those opportunities to figure out what's best suited for your needs. Because you can often find a variety of cooperatives where the pricing and the terms are much different. So are you comparing those cooperative opportunities? I think a centralized procurement function gives you that kind of opportunity to research a little more so than the decentralized function. The other item I think that we really bring to the table is kind of the art of the negotiation process when you're soliciting. And that's often lost when you don't have a centralized procurement function. And it's something that's just part of the process when you become centralized. You're, you're negotiating every single solicitation, every single contract, and you're asking for best and final offers. And I often find that just asking, you often get. If you're not asking, you're never going to get a better, a better price. So that's something that is just time that departments don't always have the time to do or really the skill to do that part of the procurement process. So that brings better value to you and it brings value on an ongoing basis. So I think those are just a couple items where you can really realize benefits. The other thing is to have a consistent process across your agency or your, across the city for everything you do. That instills confidence in the vendor community that if you're not getting good participation, it gives you the opportunity to research and find out why. There's tools that a centralized procurement function will often use, you don't find used often if you have a decentralized model. One of those is RFI's Request for Information. It's a research tool that, that we use a lot. We're using more and more at the county to kind of gauge interest in, in an upcoming project if we really don't know, you know, what we really need or want to do with something. An example is the, the historical jail. We don't really know what to do with that building as a county. So we're going to do an RFI to solicit interest in different ideas as to what that could be used for. So often, that's just a tool that isn't really utilized in a decentralized function. I know some of the cities, specifically Prescott, who I talked to just recently, they're looking at the same thing the city of Kingman is looking at as far as decentralized versus centralized or some type of model that's kind of in between. So I think, I think those people that, the larger cities, and I think Kingman kind of falls into that, where you're large enough to really start asking these questions. And I think a lot of the cities that are in your similar situation are asking these same questions as, does it make sense? The other thing that's kind of on the horizon is kind of a The other thing that's kind of on the horizon is kind of a cooperative model for purchasing. I know the, the, our representative at ACO, Brandon Nie, I believe, he's looking at a potential opportunity to create a county purchasing cooperative to where maybe a very small county that doesn't really have any procurement function could possibly, through an IGA, contract with a larger county that could provide those types of, those types of procurement expertise to the county and possibly handle some of their procurement function for them. So, you know, it's just, there's a lot of ideas out there with regard to the procurement function right now. And I think, I think over the next few years, we're going to see a lot of changes come to our industry and to this function. With technology, there's just a lot of opportunities that, that we could see more of a cooperative functionality, rather than just, you know, redoing the same thing over a multitude of different counties and cities, and, and possibly realize, you know, benefits that would be more cost-effective to cities, other municipalities. So if you have any specific questions, we're, I'll just kind of say Mojave County. We have, we have three procurement professionals that are dedicated procurement people, myself, who, I'm a procurement professional, and I do solicitations and anything that's needed within the department. We have an office specialist, and then we have our warehouse specialist as well. So that's what our procurement department looks like.
Thank you. About how many transactions or procurement initiatives do you, does your department handle in a year?
I have to say, we're entering into a very, very busy time, which is always good news because I think if procurement's busy, that means revenues are up, taxes are up. It's just good news, the economy's doing well. So right now, we probably have about 25 formal solicitations at some point in process. I'm estimating that we'll have, probably do close to fif, at least 50 solicitations over the next year, probably more. And that's just formal, that's not the informals and, that we do as well. But we have a lot of projects in the pike.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for Ms. O'Brien?
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor? Pardon?
Well, first, thank you, Ms. O'Brien, for all the information. Remind us again, employee count, for example, the county, how many employees are we talking about that you represent? Basically, because you represent the county and what you do.
You know, and I'm going to turn because Coral Lloyd is here, and she's got a better idea of employee count for the county.
1,300 or change.
Okay. I was going to say 1,200, so.
It's a big organization.
Yeah.
So, okay. And then on a whole nother issue, but somewhat related to this, because I've seen it in other communities and government entities, procurement also takes care of disbursement of public properties in certain entities. Is that something that you do also in your?
We do handle the surplus for Mojave County. We do all the surplus of, you know, desks, chairs, those type of things. We also are responsible for our annual fleet auction, for our fleet vehicles that have outlived their useful life. And the only, and we're involved in the contracting piece for the public auctions for the treasurer's office.
Okay.
But we don't manage those pieces.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess my only other question is, do you have experience in cooperative agreements with the county and city in any fashion for procurement?
I do have experience. We try to make all of our solicitations and subsequent contracts cooperative. Unless it's specific to a certain project for the county, we do include cooperative language. We have, we have reached out to the city and the other cities when we're working on, like our JLC contract, for electrical contractors. I believe we worked with the city to try to include you in those. We'd like to do more of that going into the future, you know, especially on job order contracts. You know, there's the big one, the big statewide, the big national one through Gordian, but they often really don't want smaller projects. So sometimes they're difficult to use as a cooperative for, for electrical, plumbing, HVAC, those type of projects. So we have our own job order contracts. We're working on bolstering those, and I think that's, that's a really good opportunity to work with the cities to make sure that we've included any special needs you might have as we go out to solicit for those.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, I had a question, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Ms. O'Grady?
O'Grady.
I know there, there are many different ways that a public procurement, a centralized public procurement organization can, can show that the function essentially pays for itself many times over through, you know, recording, cost avoidance and cost savings. Are you aware of any of those methods? And is that a good way to show not only the organization that the centralized procurement function is basically paying its own way, but also the citizens to say, look, we're, we're doing a good job with being public stewards?
You know, I think from the procurement perspective, we have to do, we always have to be kind of vigilant as far as demonstrating our value to the organization. As, you know, there should be regular reporting of statistics, and you should have kind of a set group of data cells that you want to report back to, because that's, that's the only way we really can demonstrate, you know, our value to the organization. You know, oftentimes procurement will be viewed kind of as the roadblock, and, you know, it's, it's really, that's not what we're here for. We're here to be, to be of assistance, to make sure things are done, to mitigate risk, you know? You don't want to have a huge project go through months and months through a process, and you get ready to award, and now you're tied up for the next six months in litigation over a protest. You know, that's the value we bring to, to bring those, to make sure that those risks are addressed, and that you have good firm standing on the recommendations when you get to the point that you're ready to award a contract. But there's certainly dashboards and matrices that can be reported on, on an, whatever timetable you feel is appropriate. Sometimes procurement processes take time, so you have to figure what elements make sense to report on. But there's certain, the data, the data's out there, the, you can, you can report and you can justify the importance of the position to the organization at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman White?
Thank you. This is, this is sort of a branch off of that last question. Tina gave us a pretty good or comprehensive list of benefits and drawbacks, and I'm sure there are more benefits that are not listed on here. But I think one of the ones that I'm mostly concerned about is something that Travis sort of touched on, you know, earlier. You know, he indicated that we are operating under a, a pretty tight budget right now. You know, we're, we're trying to make sure that every dollar is accounted for, and we're keeping, you know, our, our budget, you know, tight. One of the drawbacks that Tina listed was cost versus benefit, staffing and savings. And she mentioned in the presentation that the value, or that the, I guess the cost just for staffing and, and other operating expenses amounted to 207,415, and that includes benefits and things like that. I'm, obviously, your department operates under sort of a bigger, sort of a larger scale as you work with the county. Is there any way to quantify the monetary value that your department saves the county based off of its expenses, or is there any way to sort of quantify that?
I believe there is. I'm just, right now, we're working on new dashboards for the county from the procurement perspective. And one of the things that we've started and will be tracking going forward is exactly what we're saving through the utilization of negotiations and best and final. And like I said, for the past, probably the past five formal solicitations that we've awarded in the previous fiscal year, we've realized savings on every single one of them due to negotiations and the request of best and final offers. I don't have specific numbers in front of me here. I'm sorry, I just didn't have time to, or to prepare that kind of information. But just those few contracts, we're talking thousands of dollars.
Okay. And I imagine if we were to, you know, look into this further, obviously, we're, the reason why we're talking about it is to consider possibly implementing something like this into the city if it makes sense financially. Is there any way, you know, if we were to follow up with you guys, and could we find out?
Sure.
More specifically, those numbers, or is that asking too much?
No.
Is that kind of encroaching on?
Most, most information is public in our world, so I'd be happy to try to put together, you know, kind of a quick one-page list that kind of gives you some numbers to, to kind of digest and consider.
Okay. And I imagine, you know, if we were to consider something like this, our, our employees or the city would, you know, look at the, the savings percentage, or, you know, the, the volume of, of savings that your division would, would make, and then sort of scale it down to the size of our operation, which obviously is a little bit smaller. I imagine that's something staff would be looking into, so.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
Manager Foggan?
I wanted to be clear that our people do, their due diligence. It needs to be, you know, there may be some savings, but it needs to be clear for everybody to understand that, that we are making every effort to piggyback onto contracts that we're using. We are doing due diligence in the individual departments to make sure that we are getting the best pricing possible. I cannot leave this conversation hanging out there as if we're, we're wasting, or that we are throwing away thousands of dollars, because I've got my public works people, I've got Tina and her team, those, and I pick on those public works because that's where the, the high dollar numbers are. But I, you know, I just, I'm, I appreciate the conversation, but I can't, I can't sit here as leader of the organization and not say that we are, we are being due diligent, we're doing our due diligence when we are, when we are costing these things out. And I just, I want to make sure that that's clear, because some of the comments would suggest that, that we're not. And, you know, for, for my team, I'm not saying that we have the ability to look at every single bid, or to reach out to every single group and get the ultimate bid, but I would say that, that we are doing a, a great job in identifying low-cost providers to do the work that we're talking about. And so I just, I want to be careful, because that feels like a pretty slippery slope, suggesting that, that we're not, that we're not doing our due diligence. So I just, thank you.
And I hope, I hope nothing I said suggested that, because I don't have any real idea of how things work with the city, so.
Vice Mayor Langenfelter?
And certainly, nobody, I don't think, is saying that the staff that we have now are not doing what they know how to do. But I do think that there's, there's a difference between having centralized procurement and having professional staff that are actually, you know, they're, they are formally trained, they go to NIGP classes, they go to, they get certifications, they have to take modules through either the Institute of Supply Management or NIGP. They are trained in contracts, they're trained in strategic sourcing, they're trained in spend analysis over an organization, negotiations, contract administration. They can, they can look at an organization, they can find opportunities to consolidate purchases that, in certain categories, that can produce annual rebates. I know that at the county, you know, they may, they may ask everybody to purchase office supplies through a certain channel, and they get an annual rebate back, or there, I know there's a procurement card program where they maybe get an annual rebate. And so there's the difference. I think that we hire our engineers for their engineering expertise, and we hire our public safety staff for their public safety expertise. Our economic development and tourism people, we hire them for that specific experience. And so in a, in a decentralized system, public procurement then sort of becomes an ancillary duty. And, and that's not saying that people aren't doing their best. I'm just saying that it's different than having somebody that, that's their job in an organization, where they can look at organization-wide opportunities, they can look at making it easier for the, the vendors that we do business with, like with online vendor registration, and a lot of different opportunities like that. So that's why I put it on the agenda tonight, to, to see if we, we might be interested in moving forward and looking at some sort, some sort of a solution.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? Councilwoman Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for coming in to speak to us.
Thank you.
At this stage of the game, in our post 413 world, I think we need to move forward with taking care of our current employees, and let's move and take care of what's going on currently. And this can be something we can look at in a few years. That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Staley?
I'm sorry, you already sat down, but I have a question for you.
We have just a few minutes, I think we have about.
This is quick. Since you're here, you know, the city of Bisbee, last year their city hall burned down, and then they moved in with the county temporarily. And what they found when they moved in was there was a lot of opportunity for saving money by purchasing things with the county, making these cooperative purchases. And they've started from office supplies to fuel. Do you see opportunities if, if the city partnered up with the county to make these kind of purchases in bulk, where we could save money that way?
I think anytime you can take advantage of, you know, the purchasing on a scale, it's going to assist. When some of those purchases fuel those type of things, cooperatives are going to be your best bet, because the, the scale there is so much larger than, than the city of Kingman or the county of Mojave could, could ever hope to be. You've got, you've got, you know, entire states partnering to, to add volume to those contracts. So, so certainly, you know, cooperatives are going to continue to grow and get stronger, which is going to make all of our procurement life better. But that being said, there's a lot of different cooperatives out there. So you just have to make sure that, you know, what, all of the different opportunities that might be, and what's best going to suit your needs. But I think there's also things we could do as a county and a city so close together that, you know, just communicating and maybe letting you guys know kind of what we have on the, on the horizon as far as procurement opportunities, to where you could, you know, if we had maybe a single point of contact, that you could say, hey, we're really interested in, you know, taking a look at your solicitation, providing input, maybe tacking on some of your specific requirements. I mean, we're more than happy to do that, so.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. In a previous career, I worked with the county procurement several times, and I was always impressed by the professionalism, and, and it was such a quality process. And so I know what, I kind of know what you do, and, and certainly appreciate it. And I appreciate you being here tonight on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the last order of business is the Dollar Store Discussion. Mr. Kellogg, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council. This was brought up by Vice Mayor Langenfelter, and you helped to receive, I think, in your, in your documentation today, several articles concerning people's concerns about the, the growth of dollar stores in their community. And so when Mr. Foggan asked us to look into this, I sat down with, with Rich and Sylvia and our planning department and said, under the regs that we currently operate under today, is there anything that would preclude us saying, you know, no more, or whatever? In C2 and C3 zoning, and also in C2 HMR, which is the Walapai. In C2 and C3 zoning, and also in C2HMR, which is the Walupai Mountain Road area, there's nothing, and they, they qualify for these stores to be in those areas. And so, one of the things we said as we looked towards the future, and you're going to have this in another presentation coming up, that, that talk about form-based coding. And when we looked at that, there, there are ways within forming districts, you can preclude certain things within a district in, in the form-based coding. And so, when we certainly look at our regulations, as we're going to be doing, starting July 1st, to, to change all of those things, or, or update and everything, it certainly is one of the things that we consider. I also went and made a call to, to Mr. Cooper to make sure, is there anything within the letter of the law? And so, there really still was nothing within our regs that would preclude them from being here. Now, I understand how they, they affect communities. It's, it's interesting, because in certainly some smaller communities, they become a, they're a godsend, they don't have that store, they don't have that kind of service. In communities that are certainly larger, like ours, they can be, and sometimes are a threat to smaller mom-and-pop-based businesses, or specialty shops and stuff. Currently within our coding, we do have some restrictions. For example, we, we have care homes, there's only certain places that they can be, cannabis dispensaries, they have certain limitations where they can be, their distance from stuff, and things like, again, like adult entertainment that we've made provisions for, but, so I guess what really is today would be, is to open it up for discussion with the council, and this is kind of where we are today, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Then we'll open the floor for discussion, comments or questions.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I could, there were a lot of forwarded documents in the backup that, you know, the thing that got me to, to want to put this on the work session agenda was, in our economic development plan, there's a sentence in there that says that we have $10 stores. So, that made me really do some research, and the research that I show, or that I found showed that, maybe, you know, the data shows that dollar stores multiply rapidly, they, they focus on low-income areas, and that they're possibly a burden on regular grocery stores like Safeway, like Bashes, and, and they may also hinder retail attraction efforts in general in a city. So, I guess all I would say is, to Manager Foggan and staff, have you, or would you be willing to, to check with our grocery stores like, like Safeway, like Bashes, to see if, if the dollar stores, the proliferation of dollar stores has had a negative impact on them? And I guess my question just to staff is, does, does a proliferation of dollar stores have a negative impact on retail attraction efforts of a city? And I ask that because of the Kingman Crossing, but we have a lot of vacant storefronts as well. And I know that there are things that you can do, the form-based codes are the only one, but I know that there's communities like Tulsa that have actually come out with dispersal ordinances, where they have to be a certain set amount distance apart. So, I only put it on the agenda to see what everybody else thought.
Well, and I'd be happy to answer that. So, in discussions with, with Gary, we are prepared to bring some of those as we enter into our development code, and looking at it, whether it's through form-based, which we're, which we're a fan of. I mean, I think it would be fairly detrimental to see a dollar store land in your downtown, in, in one of your downtown spaces is, is an example, where you're trying to encourage entrepreneurs, you're, you've got people who've got specialty items, and, and looking to have, you know, those, a couple of those dollar stores, I mean, they have their place, and having used them and continue to use them, I appreciate the opportunity to have that option, but I was also, when, when reading through the, through our economic development strategic plan, I, I was surprised to count 10, and, you know, I started going, where are they? And I, I couldn't even name 10, as I was kind of surprised, and as I started driving around the community, looking for them, I, I found a couple I didn't know about. And so, and reading the, the literature that Vice Mayor Lingefelter had put out, I, I don't think, we'd be happy to talk to those stores, I don't think we'd be surprised by what they have to say, which is, there, there is probably some, some major impact, especially to the more independent grocery stores, Bashes comes to mind. So, as, as we move forward with our developing a new code, development code, that is something that we're definitely going to keep in mind, whether it's spacing, or whether it's that we do that in some kind of district format. I, I think Gary and I are prepared to, to take a look at that, so. Of course, we, it is a policy-based issue, so we would, we would obviously look for the council to kind of, as, as that comes up, to weigh in on what they prefer, and if, if that's a concern to them as well. So, as we move forward, that is definitely things that we will be discussing with, with, internally, as well as with, with the city council, and Planning Commission, so.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Staley?
So, on that, I would, I personally would support doing both, is in certain districts not allowing these stores. You know, one of the things that bothers me, if you, if you look at, there's one on Walupai Mountain Road, they don't take care of it, it's an eyesore, the one downtown we've already talked about, so it's unfortunate they don't take care of their storefronts, and, and they, they don't, you know, they're, they don't all look bad, but some of them really do. So I would say keeping them out of certain areas, but then also limiting by, if it's by space, but, but through that, we could then limit how many come into town, if, if they have to be, you know, so far apart, or whatever, and I, and I think we should look at what we can do to, obviously, the ones that are here would be grandfathered in, but getting it down under 10 as some close, because that, that's a lot of dollar stores in our city, and they, they aren't always great for the community, especially that many. So I would support doing both, personally.
I couldn't come up with quite that count, but I think we're, the other thing is that we have a unique situation, and that our county line squeezes us all the way around, so they don't have to be here, but they have to have the same effect. All they got to be is one street over, and so, you know, you're right, we control what we can control with, you know, within our, within the limits, so yes.
Any other comments?
Well, I was reading an article today on the retail apocalypse, and they included dollar stores, there are a lot of dollar stores that will be closing in the country this year that are projected, so I don't know if that will happen in Kingman, but I do think this is a prime opportunity to look at this issue, and I agree with the comments, we, it would be good to put some parameters so that we have them spaced out and, in the appropriate districts. So I think there's a lot of support for that going forward.
We will do the appropriate research, Mayor, so.
Thank you. Okay. I think we are through with the work session agenda, and we have a few minutes, we could take a break if we adjourn now. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Good evening. I'd like to call this City Council, City of Kingman City Council Meeting to Order. We've had roll calls, so I think we will move on to, we don't have an invocation, someone for the invocation tonight, so we will stand for a moment of silence, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38431.03, A3, to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First order of business is approval of the minutes, however, we have none tonight, so we'll move on to appointments. The first appointment is for the Historic Preservation Commission appointment. The city's Historic Preservation Commission experienced a member resignation in November 2018. That member's term expired in December 2018. Greta Warren has applied to fill the vacancy on the HPC, and is very qualified, interested, and motivated. Staff recommends approval. Is Ms. Warren here this evening? If you'd like to come forth? Would you like to say anything to the council and to the audience?
I appreciate your consideration. My husband and I moved here 15 years ago, and we have been involved in the historic district downtown during that time. We've had several homes, a couple businesses, and done restorations on those homes, and I would be honored to serve on the commission.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. The, is there, who's the liaison to the historic?
I am.
Oh, you are, okay. Do you have any comments?
No, I don't. I've looked them both over, so. Oops, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's okay.
Is there any other discussion, or are you ready for a motion?
Well, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. I would motion that we appoint Greta Warren to the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'll second that.
We have a second. First, a motion by Vice Mayor Lingefelter, and second by Councilman Watkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries, and thank you very much. We appreciate your, your application, yes. Next order of business is called to the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no more than three minutes. Is there anyone signed for, called to the public? Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Then we will move forward to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Would anyone care to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove item D.
D?
D, as in David.
Yep. Are there any other items to be removed? Yes. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D. Item A through E with the exception of D.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, items A through E with the exception of D.
Thank you, and a second?
A second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Item D, Approval of Branding Services Proposal from North Star. The City of Kingman Economic Development and Planning Department released a request for proposal for branding services in December 2018, and received proposals from three firms ranging from $49,000 to $80,150. Staff selected the mid-range proposal from North Star for $64,000. The Economic Development Department FY 2019 budget allocated $50,000 for the study, but the department has savings to absorb the difference between the budgeted and actual amount. Mr. Kellogg?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In looking at the backup, you've attached the five-page RFP for branding services, but you haven't attached the actual proposal from North Star, and I think that the council should be given the opportunity to review that proposal before we approve it. That's all.
Are there any other comments or discussion regarding this item? And are you, Vice Mayor, are you requesting that this be tabled and brought back?
I would ask that it be brought back the next meeting, just to allow the city council members to review the proposal from North Star, because I have not seen it, and I don't feel comfortable in, in voting for it at this point.
We'll be happy to bring it back.
Would that be good? Okay, I think that would be a good idea, and I guess, though, that we need a motion from the council toward that. Could I have a motion to table it and bring it back?
I'd motion that it be brought back the first meeting in April.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to table item D of the consent agenda and bring it back in the first meeting of April after seeing the actual proposal. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Next order of business is old business, and we have none on the agenda tonight. So we move on to new business, and the first order of new business is a request for a street deferral, street improvement deferral for a portion of Beverly Avenue. MyKid, mentally ill kids in distress, Inc., is the owner of a property located at 2615 East Beverly Avenue. A building permit application has been submitted for remodeling several existing buildings with an estimated construction valuation of $100,000. Because the proposed construction exceeds $20,000, Section 22D of the Streets and Sidewalk Development Rules and Regulations requires that the street improvements be completed on all adjoining streets. Nick Gray, Operations Manager for MyKid, Inc., has applied for a street improvement deferral of East Beverly Avenue per the Section 22E of the street policy. The Traffic Safety Commission reviewed the request on March 7th, 2019. Traffic Safety Committee has recommended that the request does not meet the criteria for a deferral. Council discretion is requested. Mr. Ruggles, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, this is a street improvement deferral request, it's for a portion of Beverly Avenue located just to the east of the Harley-Davidson location. This is the aerial of the site. MyKid is planning on remodeling several existing buildings on the side, building a new parking lot, and the building permit does trigger the requirement for the street improvements. About 165 feet of, of frontage on Beverly Avenue would, would be required to be improved with curb gutter, sidewalk, and additional pavement. This is what the site looks like, looks like presently. You can see in the, in the background, the picture, the existing edge of the, or end of the current improvements on, on Beverly. So, under the street policy, there's adopted criteria for consideration, consideration of, of a street improvement deferral. The Traffic Safety Committee met last week and reviewed the criteria, and determined that this particular request doesn't meet any of the, the criteria listed. So, at this point, staff is simply looking for council direction. If you are inclined to approve the deferral request, we'll, we would bring a resolution back for your approval at the next meeting. The other option is to deny the request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ruggles. Do any, does anyone have questions for Mr. Ruggles? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We have a request to speak, to address the council, from, is it Anna Jure of MyKid?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. My name is Anna Jure, and I am the Parent Support NOW Project Coordinator for the state of Arizona for MyKid, and I was asked to address the committee for MyKid, as their representative, our representatives are in Phoenix, where a 501(c)(3) nonprofit operating throughout the state of Arizona and have been since 1987. As you can see from the area view on Google Maps, there is no curb, gutter, or sidewalk from the east of the Harley-Davidson property. Through the trailer plus business, then vacant land, there is another 150 feet where there is pavement and sidewalk, and then, again, there is no pavement or sidewalk all the way to Bank Street. and then again, there is no pavement or sidewalk all the way to Bank Street. Section 22E4 states that property affected will be developed in phases, and that it's beneficial to complete street improvements in conjunction with the latter phase of the project, provided there is reasonable assurance that the project will be completed in a timely manner. At our meeting with the city manager, Mike Pryor, in advance to making an offer on the property, we explained how we would need to cut origination costs as much as possible in order to proceed with the purchase of the property. It was at the suggestion of the engineering department that street improvements could be deferred until the last phase of the required construction was completed. Originally, when MyKid purchased the property, it was with the understanding that the budget for improvements in order to satisfy, satisfy the city's requirements and our licensing obligations would be in the neighborhood of $100,000. As asbestos was found in one room in a small area of Building 1, and our feelings that the health and safety of the families that we serve come first, the asbestos was abated at a cost of just over $9,500 and required all the walls to be torn down in the home. With the requirements of the city and not including funds for the engineered required grading and now drainage, as of this week, the cost for the improvements are now $295,000, and this is prior to making any street improvements. Any financial deferral in consideration this council could give us towards lowering our initial origination costs would be appreciated, and we intend to be a good neighbor and part of this community for many years to come. I thank you for affording me the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jure is?
Jure, yes, French.
Very much, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Jure? Thank you so much. Well, I would open the floor for discussion. Are, any further questions for Mr. Ruggles? Vice Mayor Linganfelder?
Thank you. Andrew Foggan, maybe this would go to you, but it says here that the Traffic Safety Committee has recommended that the request does not meet the criteria. Is there anybody that sits on that committee that could maybe answer the process they went through?
Absolutely, yep. Who wants to, who wants, Rob, do you want to speak to this? Rich, okay.
Happy to try to answer that question. And I actually wasn't aware that there was a phasing plan for the, for this development. That could be a reason to, to grant a deferral. That is one of the criteria that is offered. But at the time the, the committee met, we weren't aware that it was a phasing plan for the site. The, the plan that's before us right now looks like it's for the entire site. So that was the information we had when we reviewed the, the request.
So since you've heard maybe some additional information, would it be beneficial to staff to have more time to review that and then bring it back, or?
I think the answer to that is yes. It would actually help in the decision-making.
Thank you. Mr. Ruggles, well, I guess we don't know the, the timing for the phasing end of this project, and that's what you would be ascertaining.
Correct. We would probably be reaching out to MyKid and asking them to further clarify their, their plan, their development plan on this site, and then we could take it back to Traffic Safety and have them review it again if that's the direction from council.
Because if it's deferred to the final phase of construction, that could give them time to operate, I guess, without, without the
Correct.
street improvements in place, okay. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick one, Madam Mayor, if I may? Rich, real quick, nothing's going to fall behind or fall through the cracks, and we defer it now, it's not going to never come back, correct? We don't, we don't want to actually look at this and say, today, we can defer it, but tomorrow, oh, gosh, we have to defer it again, and, oh, gosh, we have to defer it again, and, oh, gosh, we have to defer it again, and until we're 20 years down the road and we still don't have curb gutter and sidewalk.
So, so normally, when you, when you do a deferral, we, we do have a resolution that we prepare, and in, in all cases, the council does have the ability to come back and require those improvements, even if they don't do another phase in the future. We usually write it that way. Normally, it's triggered by some other development either adjacent or on the site itself that triggers that, but the council reserves the right to request those improvements be completed in a more timely manner.
Thank you.
There are no more questions? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Councilor Watkins?
Once again, Rich, they, they have not given you any idea timewise of how much time they're asking for a deferral?
I wasn't aware that there was a phasing plan for this, but we certainly will speak with them and then bring that information back.
That, that was the problem is that when, when we were dealing with this, we were anticipating it being, an entire project being done all at once.
Right.
And so until we visit with them, we have no idea what they're thinking as far as timing of their phases.
And I know, looking at the picture, I know Great West has sidewalk in front of them, don't they? Heading east towards Bank Street?
I believe so, yes.
It does. And then, of course, the tough part is it's right next door to the Harley-Davidson shop, and they bought that lot and paid for concrete just for a parking lot. It's a tough call. So, yeah, if we could get more information, that would be great.
Happy to do that.
I think, I think it's important to recognize that the, this postponement or tabling is to get more information, not to say that we would grant the deferral or not, but just to get more information, come back to council with the timeline for their construction, and then have, but after having the, the committee look at it again to make another recommendation. I think it's clear that there has been development there, and that I think what I'm hearing is the intent is not to not develop, it's just the timing. So I would entertain a motion unless there's another question.
I move we table this item until staff can come back with more information.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Motion and second to delay, table the item until staff brings back a recommendation based on new information. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is consideration of Resolution Number 5198, approving a street improvement deferral for a portion of Pier Street. A building permit has been issued for remodeling Hilltop Motel with an estimated construction value of $247,300. Because the proposed construction will exceed $20,000, Section 22D of the Streets and Sidewalk Development Rules and Regulations require that the street improvements be completed on all adjoining streets. The property adjoins three streets, East Andy Divine Avenue, Hall Street, and Pier Street. East Andy Divine is fully improved. Ms. Baker has applied for a street improvement deferral of Pier Street per the Section 22E of the street policy. The Traffic Safety Committee reviewed the request on March 7, 2019, and recommended that a deferral be granted until any adjoining properties on the west side of Pier Street develop. Staff recommends adopting Resolution 5198. Mr. Ruggles?
Good evening again. I have an aerial of the site showing the Hilltop Motel at 1901 East Andy Divine. As the mayor has read, it borders three streets, Andy Divine, which is fully improved, Hall Street, which will be improved with curb gutter and sidewalk in association with the permit that has been issued to the motel for their remodeling, and then Pier Street, which is a primarily unimproved street at this time. There's a little piece of, of pavement, as you can see, at the northern edge of the, of the site, and the rest of the street is currently not maintained by the city. This is the shot looking down the street, showing the edge of the pavement. The Hilltop Motel is to the left. There are no properties this street currently serves. There's actually no access to the Hilltop Motel directly from this street. The Traffic Safety took a look at this and believes that under, under the adopted criteria, number six, it would not really serve a benefit to the, to the overall block at this time. Perhaps when the area develops, it would make more sense to put the improvements in at that time. So that is the recommendation from Traffic Safety to delay the improvements until such time as the adjoining properties develop. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Ruggles? Thank you.
Thanks.
I think we have no one signed up to speak on this, so. So are there any comments by staff or discussion, or are we ready for a motion? Well, I would entertain a motion that we adopt Resolution 5198 per staff recommendation.
A motion that we adopt Resolution Number 5198 as presented.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Department reports.
Thank you, Mayor. We actually do not have any reports, but I did want to let the council know that as we move forward, one of the things that you're going to see is an effort to move a few items that we've been trying to cover in work session into the department reports. Things that are, are quicker and can be covered in a more timely basis. We're, we're going to move those off of work sessions and into, into this section. So just wanted to let you know that we are working on that, so.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Announcements by Mayor, council members, and city managers. These are limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability, attendance at conferences, and seminars. Manager Foggan, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've got a few things to cover with you. First of all, I just want to let the council know that, I guess, it's a reiteration of an email that went out with regards to the animal, exotic animal issue that we've dealt with. The, the idea was that we were going to have something back to you by the first of April, kind of based on some information, some extensive information that we received from a very knowledgeable attorney, in combination with Carl having some requirements to attend conference. We're not going to have the ability to get you something until the first, probably the first meeting in May. So just wanted to make sure that it was clear that that is not going to be covered in April. So didn't want anybody to be alarmed that we'd forgotten about that.
Thank you.
Also, just wanted to remind everybody that April 16, that is our second council meeting in April, we will be back at our digs at City Hall, so plan on, plan on being back there for both work session and our council meeting. We're pretty excited to be back in our, our own space, so. And I think everybody will be pleased with the improvements that have been made in the space, so. And then finally, just wanted to remind the council that there will be an agenda for a special meeting on the 26th of March. That meeting will be, are, in, at City Hall in the, in the space, our council chambers. We won't utilize it in the way that we're using, use it normally, but we, we are planning on talking about some policies, additional conversations about revenue, and we're going to cover, of course, the retirement system ideas that Tina talked about. We'll talk about in more depth at that meeting, and so look for that agenda. Please add it to your calendars. I understand it's an off-council Tuesday, but in looking at the calendar, that seemed like the best time. And so it will be four o'clock on next Tuesday. And I've taken enough of your time, thank you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Councilman Watkins?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Wade?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Staley? Councilwoman Nelson?
Nothing, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilwoman Scott, Mello Keener?
Well, I went to a WACOG meeting today, and they have a new program that they're trying to roll out to the county and the city. It's a utility assistance pre-enrollment program for seniors. It'll help them, if they enroll now, then they can get help with their electricity bill, electricity only throughout the summer months. And they're really excited about it, and I have all the information if anybody wants to fill out an application, see if they qualify. And for those that are watching online, they can just email me at the city to my email, and I will be happy to get this information to them.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
I have a few things. One, I attended the groundbreaking yesterday for the new courthouse expansion, and it was well-attended and very celebratory. It's a very historic moment. It will take several years of construction, but we're really excited to see it break ground because it's been many, many years in development and planning, so that was, that was a good occasion. Like to thank Supervisor Hildy, Hildy Angus for doing a very nice discussion of the history and our partnership. Also, I attended the Western Arizona Law Enforcement Training Association, WALITA, I hope I got that right, chief, event last Friday in Lake Havasu with Manager Foggan. This was an opportunity to see a simulation, a training simulator that our region is very fortunate to have, one of the six areas in the state that got these very sophisticated training scenarios for our law enforcement personnel. It's very dramatic. The screens totally surround the individuals that are inside, and it looks like they're going into these real scenarios that can be almost anything, it seemed to me. So I'm very, very thankful that our law enforcement personnel have that, and thank you for all that is going on in public safety. And finally, just wanted to let you know that yesterday at the Board of Supervisors, the supervisors provided the, or the VASH, or the Veterans Vouchers to the project for Adams Construction, and so that project moves to the next phase, and they have a site selected on Walupai Mountain Road that is already zoned appropriately, and they are looking forward to getting funding, and once that is in place, moving forward with the veterans' housing. So with that, we'll move on to council requests for future work session agenda items or calendar adjustments. I am seeing no adjustments. We're in good shape. So the next item is adjournment, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved and second?
I second it.
Moved and second to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Good night.